Seven oh one, so we're calling our meeting to order. Could we please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance?
Ready? Get in.
Please remain standing for a moment of silence for our first responders and military members. Thank you. Monica, could we get roll call, please?
Roll call, Councilmember Soto.
Present.
Councilmember Moran.
Present.
Councilmember King.
Present.
Mayor Potem Garcia.
Mayor Aguilar.
Present.
For the record, Mayor Potem is not in attendance and his absence is excused.
Thank you, Monica. We're gonna have closed session after our regular council meeting, so we'll be reporting back on that. Counsel, any changes to the agenda at this time? I don't see any. We're gonna go ahead and move on to citizen comments. This section of the agenda allows members of the public to address the city council on any item not otherwise on the agenda. Members of the public, when recognized by myself, should come forward and identify themselves. Comments are normally limited to three minutes. In accordance to state open laws, no action will be taken by the city council this evening. For items which are on the agenda this evening, members of the public will provide an opportunity to address the city councils. Each item is brought up for discussion. Do we have any citizen comments at this time? Is there any citizen comments on the phone? Or emails? Okay, go ahead, Monica.
Good evening, Council Christina Chavez, the Transit Manager for Merced County Association of Government here. I wanted to share with you that the five-year short-range transit plan for Merced County is available for public review and comment through August 21st. The bus is starting the implementation of some of these recommendations in the plan and some outstanding unmet transit needs. Updates will be made to routes M4, M7, L Route, LB Route, and Planata Routes. Public comment is currently being received on the proposed changes. The changes are scheduled to take plan August 13, 2022. Please visit mercedthebus.com for more information and additional details on both of these items. On-the-bus free fares for all will be available the months of July, August, and September throughout Merced County. A variety of members of the community currently receives a discounted fare pass with a valid ID, so the bus has secured grant to fund all those general fare passengers' free rides on the bus through September. Additionally, I wanted to share with you and the community of Livingston, Yards is in full swing and all Merced and Mariposa residents are eligible to receive a free round trip ticket to Yosemite on Yards. Visit yards.com for more information on schedules and the program for Merced County residents. Thank you for your time and service, Christine Chavez.
Thank you so much. Any other emails or public comment? Monica, there's nothing else? No, okay, thank you. Alright, so we're gonna go ahead and move on to our awards, presentations, and proclamations. We have three tonight. I'm very happy to have three gentlemen here in our audience that we're gonna be recognizing. Like I've stated in previous meetings, it's very important to me and for the council to recognize members of our community that are giving back to their community. They're involved in different activities, different professions, and it's very important that the community sees this and they're highlighted and recognized. So it's very important and very happy that you gentlemen are here joining us today. I think it's appropriate since yesterday was July 4th, so I think it's very appropriate that you guys are here joining us tonight. So I'm gonna start off with our first presentation. I really wanna thank General Ojero for coming and joining us, you know, tonight. It's a pleasure that you're gonna join me in recognizing two members of our community here in Livingston. I'm gonna speak a little bit about the general. So we have here Assistant General for the California Air National Guard. He monitors mission effectiveness and wide range of programs and activities involving five major field-level organizations comprised of nearly 5,000 military and civilian personnel serving at 10 locations within California. In this capacity, General Ojero serves as one of the Senior Air National Guard Officers responsible for providing trained, equipped, and mission-ready forces to support national defense requirements worldwide in emergency response, relief, and recovery operations throughout California. So I'm gonna read, I do have a certificate for you here, sir. I'll read what our certificate states. "In recognition of your service, your courage, and your sacrifice in the support of the United States of America, your dedication to our country is commendable and honorable addition to the fight for freedom. The Livingston Mayor, City Council, City Manager, and staff recognize you for your faithful service in the United States." So join me in congratulating General Taft Ojero. So I'm gonna let you guys, let you introduce yourself just real quick, and then we'll recognize our Livingston members here.
Thank you, Mayor. Thank you, City Councilmen. As you alluded to, it was the Fourth of July yesterday, and as a going-on 30 years of service for myself, I grew up in the Central Valley, went to the Air Force Academy for four years, and then spent 10 years on active duty. Just seeing this makes every deployment, which I've had about 10 to 15, is what's important, because there's other places on this planet that doesn't have this ability to have this kind of political discourse where the citizens get to decide amongst themselves, what is your pursuit of life, liberty, and happiness, which is in the preamble under our Constitution. So to the youth that are sitting here and to the families, I say thank you, because you're the future. You're the bonds that allow us to put on the uniform and go do the things that we do. To the two airmen that are sitting here, I think it's awesome that I'm in blues, because this means that I do a lot of paperwork, and they're actually in what we call our utility uniforms. So these are the men and women of the Air Force, of your California Air National Guard, that provide what we call in the Air Force, the fly, fight, and win. That's what the Air Force is supposed to do for our citizens, is win. That's what you pay us to do 24/7, and that's what they do at the 144th Fighter Wing. And I'm so proud of the Chief and Master Sergeant Malanato, because they make sacrifices every day. So this is not about me, this is about them. So I would like to take this time out now personally to say, I appreciate what you do, and I can't wait to see you at your wing when I get to come visit with my boss, Brigadier General Buto, and Major General, gosh, you guys got me all flustered, Major General Baldwin, which is the adjutant general of the California National Guard. So, thank you, Mayor Juan.
Thank you, General. I appreciate it. And I'm gonna go ahead and recognize these two gentlemen. First, we have Chief Master Sergeant of the California Air National Guard, Ramon Lopez. Once again, this what the certificate states, "In recognition of your service, your courage, your sacrifices, and the support of the United States of America, your dedication to our country is commendable and honorable addition to the fight for freedom. The Livingston Mayor, myself, the City Council, the City Manager, and the staff recognize you for your faithful service in the United States. And I know the community as well is very thankful for your service, so thank you so much." You wanna introduce your family real quick?
How's it going? I'm born and raised here in Livingston. I was active duty for a while, and I've came back. Live in Livingston, and my wife and son are in attendance. And as the general said, it's very difficult, if not impossible, to do things by yourself, so having that support system with family, with friends, and those that understand and appreciate us. So when we see the banners and the recognition for us military members, we truly appreciate it. And not just us that are here today, Sergeant Malanato and I, but the whole wing. We appreciate the countless efforts that the community, the citizens appreciate and give to us day in and day out when we're home stationed or deployed or protecting our communities, handing out sandbags, and doing what we do as a citizen airman. Thank you.
Now we're gonna bring up Master Sergeant of the California Air National Guard, Elias Malanato. Sir, same thing. I'm gonna read the certificate. "In recognition of your service, your courage, and your sacrifice in support of the United States of America, your dedication to our country is commendable and honorable addition to the fight for freedom. The Livingston Mayor, myself, the City Council, City Manager, and the staff recognize you for your faithful service in the United States. I know the community and your family here in Livingston also are very proud of you and support you and are very happy that you're here being recognized." You wanna introduce your family and say a little bit about yourself, please?
Alright, thank you, guys. Thank you, Mayor, again for, you know, bringing us out here and recognizing us in front of our families. It's hard for us, especially, you know, commuting to Fresno, for our job to take them up there, for them to see us and see what we do. So I appreciate you recognizing us over here. Same thing as Chief and General, I said, you know, it's great that, you know, we're able to do this over here, and it's awesome to see, you know, someone from this community as well, General, making it out here, showing us that the possibilities, you know, that we can do out here that we don't see unless we do stuff like this. So thank you again.
Thank you so much. Yes, these are, all three gentlemen are local, Central Valley, Merced County, you know, members. Two of them members who live here in our city, so I'm very, very happy. I know the council is very proud. I'm very happy that we're able to highlight you guys and definitely show the youth that everything's possible. You know, you guys are embedded in our community, but look at what you guys are doing. You know, you're serving your country, community, having your families, and being productive members of our community and giving back. So I really am very thankful, General, for joining me this evening to recognize these gentlemen. And we're gonna take a quick recess, so you guys can take some photographs with your, with your families, and welcome back. Okay, we're gonna continue on with our council meeting today. We're gonna go ahead and move on to announcements and reports. Vanessa, do we have any staff announcements and reports at this time?
Mayor, good evening. Councilmembers, we don't have any staff reports tonight.
Thank you so much. We're gonna go ahead and move on to City Manager announcements and reports. Vanessa?
I have none tonight, Mayor.
Okay, we're gonna move on to City Councilmember announcements and reports. Councilmember King?
I have nothing, Mayor.
Councilmember Jose Moran?
Yes, give me a minute, give me a second, let me find it. Okay, so, thank you. So, a week ago, I attended a conference for NALEO, which is the National Association for Latino Elected Officials. And there were some very important, interesting topics, which nowadays, more than ever, I think they're important for, not only for elected officials, but for cities. Some of the workshops that, that I was Some of the workshops that I was able to attend, among others, was one related to clean transportation and how we should benefit from electric vehicles and how can we create and have our own infrastructure as a municipality and where to look for grants and funding. That connected to another one that was investing in infrastructure that serves everyone, including access to transportation for everyone in the community. And even though it looks like we are a small community, there are certain areas of the population that doesn't have access to transportation. So, there's different ideas that other cities are working with and have been successful to be able to provide that to all of, to everyone that they serve, providing more information about how to provide, be able to provide more wide open spaces like parks, play areas, clean water, and economic development, workshops like, this one was interesting, Ethics in Government. And they focus on California Brown Act. That was fun. They actually made it into a kind of like a Geoprinty game. So, I was not the top points earner, but it was fun. Emergency preparedness, self-care. You know, as elected officials or as just average citizens, you know, how can we work hard, but at the same time, self-care? How to be able to take care of ourselves, because if we're not doing well, then we're not gonna be able to perform. So, that was very important, a different perspective. And last week, I was not, well, at the end of the month, I wasn't able to attend the recreation meeting because I was at the conference. A few days ago, actually on Friday, I was able to attend the Phantom Fireworks Display. It was at Alvernas Field. It was very nice. It was, it was nice to see families out there at Alvernas Field. They brought their blankets, their lawn chairs, and they just sat out there and were able to enjoy the safe and sane fireworks display. And for the last couple of weeks, I've been, I was trying to contact Union Pacific or someone for this area. Finally, this morning, well, last week I made contact and they said, you know, they asked me to call them back today. So, this morning, I was able to make contact with the area director, I guess, with concerns to our train crossing and how because of the way it was built, or the way it's still built, their safety arms are on the way for us or for the city to be able to build or extend the sidewalk. So, we don't, we have, we don't have sidewalk on the area. So, that causes or forces people to get off the sidewalk onto the, onto the road, becoming a safety hazard. And then mostly, I've been able to see a lot of older folks walking and with, with canes or other walking assistance devices. And that makes it even more dangerous for them to be able to have to get off the sidewalk, onto the road, and then back on the sidewalk. So, hopefully, I know that, I have my high hopes that they'll be able to coordinate with the city, with staff, and be able to do something for us to be able to have a complete sidewalk where it doesn't become a safety hazard. And that's it. Thank you.
Councilman Maria Soto?
I have nothing to report.
Mayor Potem Garcia? Oh, he's not on the phone, correct? Okay, thank you. I'm gonna go ahead and move on to mayor's announcements and reports. Also took the opportunity to attend the Naleo 39th National Conference. Definitely very-
Mayor Potem Garcia, is that you?
Okay.
Yes, sir.
Okay, I'll give him a chance, opportunity to do his report after I'm done. Definitely a lot of good topics, just as council member Jose Moran stated. You know, great educational opportunities for council and mayor. You know, the framework in regards to this national conference is regarding, you know, Latino elected officials. So, it's very, you know, it's a unique take, a different take geared towards, you know, to those elected that are Latino background, which, you know, in our case, there's quite a few of us here, and in specific to the community, Latino community as well, which obviously our community is comprised of. So, it's different, has different takes definitely, and different perspective in regards to that, that framework. So, it's very educational, very rewarding to see the different people there networking and different ideas being bounced around. So, it's definitely a benefit, benefit to a community. I'm, if council member Jose Moran's okay with that, I think we should come up with some kind of PowerPoint, if you're okay with it, and maybe present some of the topics or ideas presented in, at least a quick format where, you know, we could share with the community. I think it'd be a good idea. A lot of good things happening nationwide, and I think the community just seeing or hearing about it could definitely be beneficial. Other than that, you know, obviously, moving forward on different things, working with city staff and trying to move the city forward, getting things, you know, accomplished and together. You know, met with different departments throughout the last month, planning, engineering, trying to advocate in getting stuff done. So, yeah, we're moving forward. That's it pretty, for me, pretty much. Mayor Potem Garcia, are you there?
Yes, sir.
It's time for your report. Anything to report?
Negative. I'm, I'm reporting out.
Okay, sir, thank you. So, we're gonna go ahead and move on to the concerned agenda? Oh, yes. Oh, Rodrigo, do you, do you wanna, anything to report, sir? Oh, we, yeah, pasaron. Yeah, so, but go ahead.
I think she wanted some comments too. I think she was late. So, is it okay if she speaks first? You wanted to say something first? I'm sorry.
Could we give her just a portable microphone?
Okay, you wanna sit down and open your microphone? Okay. She wants to stand.
Mayor, we can't hear anything. You guys are reporting out.
No, we're waiting for a public comment. Go ahead, ma'am. Go ahead.
I am here to propose to the city of splitting spend and motion, take a motion that you send out, color notices, system changes to auto pay customer and those who you have fined for not reporting in to pay a late fee. You sent me a pink slip. I'm auto pay. What I am is one of your best customers because my bill automatic.
I wanna reclaim my time. Uh, where is that at? Okay. And the others that you have fined to reimburse them for a late fee. I understand that you give a courtesy to the customers if it's a first time. Well, this is a first time. But what I'm upset about is that you sent to me, and I don't know how many others, a pink slip. And I went, oh, would I win a car? A pinto, huh? What is it? And, but no, it's a late fee and stating that you are, I am negligent. How dare me? We're gonna shut off your water. I don't appreciate it. I have a mortgage, a mortgage, and I've had five lenders been just thrown all around the world. And they, I say, wait a minute, I have auto pay. Do I have to change anything? Don't do anything. It'll transfer over. Well, what happened to the new system you bought? Shouldn't have transferred over? I am not, I, I am the victim. I am not the enemy here. I want this taken care of. And, and, and I motion, I don't know in, probably in the audience, but to make, put this on your next meeting and it should be proved that the customers get reimbursed for their late fee who have auto pay. I'm your good customer. You get your money. You should have done better. You should have had a system that it rolled over and I didn't have to do anything. Sending me one email that says important does not. People who do auto pay, we don't look at our bills. They get paid automatically. I will get informed if something changes. That is what has happened with lenders because I have a mortgage. Help me out here. Am I wrong? The cars are about to fly, but you can't get auto pay to roll over? I don't get it. I want, I will not pay the late fee. I should be reimbursed, and so should everybody else who had auto pay, who paid a late fee. And you need infrastructure on from Robin, Robin to River, through River. It is horrible, horrible. Okay, and that's all I think I got. I reclaim in 15 seconds. All right. And what did I have down here? Okay. Removed. Okay, I think I'm done. People automatically, yeah, okay, I think I said it. All right. All right, so could that, could that be put on whatever it's supposed to be put on to be asked to? Should we move on this motion? Because I already proposed it. Somebody should say second. First, first it, second it. Okay, he seconded, I think. What?
We would have to agendize it and-
Would you put it on the agenda? I expect a positive response for this, because I will never pay it, ever, unless it's my fault. It's not my fault. It's not my fault when you decide, okay, we're gonna send a pink slip since she hasn't paid. Now, I'm a horrible person. That pink slip should have been a 15, 20 day notice. And I would have, boom, I, I see the pink slip. It's like I said, what? Did I win a car? It's a pink slip. Is it a pinto? I'll take whatever it is.
Thank you. Thank you, ma'am, for your time. I appreciate it. Thank you. I'll have Tony, Tony, if you, if you wanna have Tony just touch bases with her before she leaves, that'd be great.
What?
Please. We'll have one of our staff members just touch bases, gather your information, and we'll, we'll get back to you, definitely. Thank you so much.
Ms. Sanchez, thank you for your comment. And behind you is our district supervisor, Rodrigo Espinoza. He can help you address the issue between Robin and River Road, as that's county.
I think, well, West Side, because River is off. I noticed that. Could have been red, green, blue, yellow.
Thank you so much for your time.
Send a notice.
I'm gonna comment on the bill too, so, because I, I paid for that too. You're right here. Thank you very much, council. Well, first of all, I just wanna express my feeling about what she had commented to. I was one of those that ended up paying, because I was on automatic payments, and I got one of those bills too. So, I ended up paying for two months, and I got that pink slip bill too, but I came and paid it. So, I'm pretty sure I probably paid the penalty as well. So, if you guys can look at that. I know that my wife called and she was, we were supposed to probably get out of it and then apply again on the app. And I guess, but most people probably didn't, weren't told or didn't follow that, and so that's why, why they, they got the penalty. So, also on River Road, my new district will include River Road all the way to Washington. Right now, it doesn't until in January. My new district won't include River Road all the way. Right now, it cuts off at Robin, but then in January, we'll go all the way to Washington Road. So, that'll be my road. And, but I'll bring it up to Lowndes, and hopefully, when we can, we'll fix that road down there. So, right now, I'm working on fixing Lincoln all the way to 140, not just the city limit. So, if you noticed, I called in for the potholes that was from the city limits all the way to West Side. But it's terrible all the way to 140. So, we're working on that. Also Magnolia, which is very bad, and Peach as well. I mean, after my Public Works Road, because they didn't finish off the little portion of Dwight on both sides of the freeway, on the north and on the south, as you see, they didn't finish the county side. So, I don't know, I think I told Vanessa one time that Public Works to work with the city so that way, because half of the roads, the city, and half of the road is, belongs to the county. And the same thing on the south side of town, from the freeway to Peach on Dwight. So, just addressing those issues. And also, I'm also addressing Olive, but I know that we had a priority list of my top 10 roads that we just approved a couple meetings ago, and throughout the county, I'm addressing, actually, Bird Street too, that goes all the way to the firing range, which is also a priority, and Olive as well. Also was, was, what I was gonna comment was on the parks and landscaping. A lot of people have been calling me regarding the parks not being watered correctly. There's a lot of dry areas. I know that on Gallo Park, we had almost a few trees die there. I guess, you know, somebody caught up in, in the water those trees and next to the picnic shelters. And along the walking path, in front of a well, in front of the well, there's a dry area that's next to that South Lot that, that's, it used to be all green and now it's all dried. And as well as Fred, Frederick Warren Park by my house, it's very dry. And, you know, and also I got a call regarding the landscaping on, on Robin and Lilac. Robin and Lilac is, you know, they were complaining that they're paying CFDs for the landscaping and they're not getting, you know, we're all paying on the new homes, and the city's taking out the landscaping but not putting it back. So, I know that it's been tough times getting employees. We're, you know, every organization, every, you know, private business is going through, not just here, this is global. You know, I was in Mexico a couple weeks ago, and they're having the same issues everywhere. So, I know that the city, like I said, hired landscapers, but hopefully, you know, slowly we'll catch up. So, I know that, that's what I told them, you know, just call the city and hopefully, the city will come out and hopefully water the areas affected. So, but also around town, when, you know, when I was mayor, I'm not asking the mayor to do this, but also I used to walk around or drive around, and, you know, if there's encumbrances like, you know, tree limbs hanging over the sidewalks, because they are, people like to walk around town. And, you know, we have a beautiful walkable community. I think that the city needs to do a better job probably of just trimming around it. So, if somebody has on the public tree that needs to be trimmed along the sidewalks, you know, for, for, around your community, just please call in Public Works and, or the mayor, or any council member, and I hope they can resolve that and get those trees trimmed. I also attended the Naleo Annual Conference, which we, it hadn't happened in three years, along with Mayor Aguilar and Jose Moran. It was a very educational, this is like my fifth or sixth time that I've attended, because, you know, the education and camaraderie and the knowledge that we receive from those conferences is always beneficial, and we bring it back and try to use that and incorporate it into our communities. So, uh, to me, it was very, it's always very, very beneficial. I also just wanted to comment that I called the property owner of Robin and Lilac that, uh, can't remember how much it is, six or 10 acres. It's very dry. I called him last year and then this year right now, I called, I had a meeting one time, I think over a year ago with that property owner. So I kept his number and I called him, uh, to tell him that it was, uh, you know, because those homes are close to, uh, the very dry grass. And, you know, well, hopefully we don't get a, uh, a fire. So, you know, hopefully he'll, he said he was gonna, you know, get it, get it taken care of, so. And, and again, uh, the county is being very aggressive against the fireworks, illegal fireworks. I know that, you know, Fourth of July just passed and that hopefully everybody enjoyed it. But we still, you know, illegal fireworks, uh, are still happening. It's gonna happen for, for days or, or weeks. So hopefully our public, you know, police department here is able to catch some more people because it's like, say, it's just ridiculous. And we're still getting the calls about, uh, the unsafe, uh, illegal fireworks. So thank you very much for your time.
Thank you. And no, definitely, I do drive around probably daily. And I do try to communicate different concerns to our city manager and pass on to staff.
Thank you, council.
Definitely, thank you.
I got a question for the city staff, for Vanessa. How many residents got char- overcharged? Do you have an idea or, or anybody's staff have an idea?
I'm sorry.
That got the, the late fee for the auto draft?
Yeah, it's not an overcharge, it's a late fee.
Do, do you know how many residents got that?
I don't have that information. We would have to bring this back from.
Can we bring it back next council meeting?
Now, if I mean, just now that makes me wonder, like, I, hopefully Tony's not out there anytime soon on my house trying to shut off my water. Probably because I'm probably on that list too. So, uh, now I gotta check my mail, my little pile of junk mail, uh, to see if I, if I have that, one of those pink notices somewhere. So thank you for bringing that up and, and, uh, something that we can look at. And hopefully, uh, we can try and figure something out. Thank you.
And.
Go ahead, Vanessa.
Thank you, Mayor, council members. We will take, uh, Mrs. Sanchez's information. So my finance team will be in contact with you regarding the notice that you've received, and we can work together on that. And in regards to the landscaping, I know that, uh, I have met with our Public Works Department, and this is going to be a priority for our department to, um, get, uh, taken care of. I know that we have, we have gotten, we have had, um, and dealt with some emergency items and some staffing, as I had shared last meeting. But, um, this is one of the priorities that we are, uh, putting on the top of the list for our work to do in the city.
Thank you so much. We're gonna go ahead and move on to our consent, uh, consent agenda. Items on the consent calendar are considered routine and non-controversial will be enacted by one vote unless separate action is requested by the city manager or city council member. There will be no separate discussion of the, of these items unless members of the city council or city manager request that specific items be removed. Council?
I'd like to, uh, just quickly pull item number eight. I, I, uh, anyways, so, and then I move to approve, if that's okay, the rest of the consent agenda, including four, five, six, and seven.
All right, we have a motion to approve items four, five, six, and seven. Do we have a second?
Yes, I'll second that.
Second by Councilmember King?
I'll second.
Monica?
Roll call, Councilmember Soto?
Yes.
Councilmember Moran?
Yes.
Councilmember.
Yes.
Mayor Potem Garcia?
Yes.
Mayor Aguilar?
Yes.
Motion approved by a vote of five zero.
Thank you.
Uh, so on item number eight, establish, is to establish the city policy for a tie vote when two or more candidates receive an equal number of votes. I understand it after reading it like six times and doing, asking Google and all that. So, you know, it does make sense. But I, I also understand, well, I know that there are, uh, a few residents that have, uh, that reached out to me regards to this item. So if I can just have legal, just, uh, go over the, over that item, and just expand on it or explain it, and we can go from there.
Sure. In that rare situation that we have a, a tie in the election, section 15651 of the election code provides us with two alternatives for determining, uh, the outcome of the tie. The city can settle a tie vote by lot. By lot means drawing a, uh, drawing a name from a hat, a coin toss, high card. The other option is to choose to run a special election, a runoff special election. Now, the, uh, the downside to the, uh, to the tie, of course, is that, uh, the citizens aren't deciding. The, the downside to having the citizen decide the special election is that it's about, you know, seventy thou- sixty-five, seventy-five thousand dollar cost. So that's the, uh, those are the two policy options that you have. Do it by lot. Draw a name out of the hat, toss it a coin, or having this special election.
So even though here on the, um, the report, it suggests one of, the one way it could be done is just by a flip of a coin. But even though it's very rare, like, I think like seven percent chance that there could be a tie. But also, this is part of this, this item or this section or was missing from what we worked on two weeks ago.
It was, uh, yeah, it hasn't been in your, your code or addressed two weeks ago. That's correct. And the county elections officials pointed that out to us.
Okay, so just to clarify, this is not something out of, out of nowhere, but it was, it was just missing, um, what we're supposed to include two weeks ago, just.
To the registered voters, correct.
Okay, thank you.
Any other questions, council? Any questions from the members of the public? All right, bring it back to council. Motion?
I'll make the motion to approve it.
A motion to approve by Mayor Potem Garcia. Do we have a second?
Second.
Second by Councilmember Jose Moran.
Roll call, Councilmember Soto?
I just wanted to state my opinion, even though, um, I know there's a motion on the floor, but I would rather go the other route. I know that was recommended by staff to luck of the draw who wins. But again, I'm in, I would be in favor of the citizens' vote, even though it, uh, it's very costly, sixty-eight thousand dollars. I'd rather have the people vote in, in case of a tie. But in a rare occasion, I, we haven't seen a tie. So again, that's our luck, I guess. But, um, yes.
So we have a motion on the table. Monica?
Councilmember Moran?
Yes.
Councilmember King?
Yes.
Mayor Potem Garcia?
Yes.
Mayor Aguilar?
Yes.
Motion approved by a vote of five zero.
We're gonna go ahead and move on to discussion and potential action items. Uh, number nine, discussion direction allocating the Fourth of July funds to the Centennial Celebration.
Mayor, council members, um, back in, um, May, the council and, we had a discussion in regards to having a Fourth of July fireworks show for the city, in the city, being that within the pandemic, it, it had been, um, put on hold. The council later, uh, approved a budget of, uh, twenty thousand dollars to do this, um, to do this firework event. However, although we, um, we had the fire, the Fourth of July Committee tried to secure a vendor and a technician that will do, um, the show for us. Like, uh, we have been sharing with, um, with the pains of, um, of, of, of this, um, post-pandemic. Our technicians or the staffing, it was, uh, we were unable to secure that, uh, staffing or technicians. So, um, at this point, we wanted to get direction on the allocation of the Fourth of July funds, um, to either, uh, the Centennial or to a future event. So we wanted to have, bring this item for discussion and, um, and direction to staff.
Thank you, Vanessa. Definitely, and I think the Fourth of July Committee had tried their, their best. And you're right, after COVID, you know, there's always staffing issues. And I know there was no operator available. And then even the Fourth of July Committee ended up being just a one-man show. And he was obviously kind of disbanded over, over COVID, over the two-year COVID situation, two, three-year COVID situation. Um, I mean, I tried helping him, definitely made efforts, uh, together. And I know the county, the council, you know, that what they could and approve those funds towards a fireworks show. Ultimately, the Fourth of July Committee were not successful in securing anybody, either for, I believe, not even for a later date. So I, I, I am in agreement with moving these funds to the Centennial Celebration. I think we should have a... We have Tony? Let's, let's see what direct department has to say.
We would be really grateful that you guys really want to spend the money on the Centennial. But if you remember from the presentation Jackie gave, we already have ten thousand allotted for a fireworks show. And we've actually done a, we're gonna do a presentation with the band. So it's going to kind of, um, be a whole show with the band, including the fireworks. So I, even though we're really appreciative and that the, a lot of people did reach out to us about maybe doing this, but I think maybe they missed that part of Jackie's presentation. We already have a show planned for that, and we already have the money allocated for that. So, I mean, if we'd like to hold over for next year, a lot of people did want to do Fourth of July this year, and I'm one of them. I love the Fourth of, this is the first time I haven't worked in, since the pandemic, the Fourth of July, I don't even know what to do with myself on the Fourth without working it. So, um, since so many citizens maybe really would like to get involved with the Fourth of July Committee, I would say, let's try and get a whole new committee going. Uh, we always help facilitate that. Usually Jackie's on vacation and it's usually me. And it's very much the norm for me. It's part of my Fourth of July. So, um, again, I volunteered my time, whether I'm a paid employee or I volunteer as a resident. But, um, that might be something that you guys maybe want to think about or have a discussion about carrying it over, maybe till this fiscal year. And, um, since we are celebrating our Centennial, um, we'll just do the Fourth of July this fiscal year, and be a year from now for us. But, uh, maybe just do a good show then and something for the residents. Maybe not for the whole county, but just do something for the residents. Just all the appreciation for celebrating our hundred years. And then maybe just ending with a great Fourth of July show in 2023. But that's our, my input on the, on that. Did you have questions? Or anything else I can answer for you guys about that?
Doesn't seem like.
Yeah, thank you for, for your input. I was going to suggest the same thing because knowing that there was a different kind of presentation being on the, the, um, Centennial Committee, even though we haven't met. But that was the last discussion. We took the money out, we put it back in. Ten thousand went to the fireworks because of the, we took it from somewhere else, but put it back. So with that already being done, and then rehashing the Fourth of July Committee, I'd rather see it go towards a, uh, Fourth of July festival for next year.
Yes. So, but whatever you guys decide, we're always on board to support. So whatever you, like I said, whatever you guys would like to do, the Rec Commission, the Recreation Commission, which we have held here, and the Recreation Department is always glad to help facilitate that.
Thank you. Um, I have different thought, I mean, no, definitely, uh, definitely these people should, definitely get involved with the Fourth of July Committee, I agree. Um, because it's not an easy task, um, to get, you know, accomplish such a, you know, show and, and festivals. So it's a lot of work and, and we definitely, I know the Fourth of July Committee need, need people from the community to step up and, and help out. It's a lot of work.
It is. And, um, I'd be glad to meet with Julio. And, uh, we have lists, Julio and I, we have lists for days and how we changed and upgraded things and where we need the help. Uh, so everybody has their own forte of what they're really good at as far as showing up, whether it's parking lot, um, door, um, helping out at the entertainment, or just, um, regular maintenance. And we have a lot of kids from the high school and the junior high. And we also have our hundred volunteers that are showing up for different steps. So we can always reach out to certain people, whatever their forte is about volunteering. So it doesn't seem so overwhelming when you break it up into groups. And we have lists for everything from doing this for quite some time. So we can always try and get people on certain committees to do that. That might help take some of the burden off the Fourth of July Committee and making it into smaller groups. But we should start now. It does take about a year to plan it, a, a large event. Uh, six months out is when you start hitting the ground really hard with it. I mean, Sweet Potato Festival is here, and we start planning for that in February, and it's not till September. So you can see that the planning is a lot, and the same with the Fourth of July. And even lock, um, locking in a, a pyrotechnic person and a company, and then the fire marshal. I mean, all those things are very time-consuming. So we would be glad to help facilitate that as well.
Thank you. Any other questions?
Yeah, for that, uh, you say you have ten thousand dollars for the Centennial? How long is that show gonna be?
Well, because we're getting it outside the system, and we actually are working with the band on how long that's gonna be. But it, it should be about, uh, about a fifteen-minute show. So people kind of get bored after about fifteen, twenty minutes of fireworks. But we have it where, where the band is going to play. So it'll be like bum, 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 bum. And then the fireworks will go, and then the band will play and, and build it back up. There's actually a name for it, and Jackie's our music person, so I can't remember the name of it. But it's gonna be about a fifteen, twenty-minute show.
Thank you, Tony.
Any other questions?
Any other questions? Anybody?
Not a question, but rather a comment, um, in speaking, uh, with various residents, uh, some of them or one of them specifically, and then some provided additional support. And, and, and I think it was a good idea. I don't like fireworks. Well, I like fireworks. I just don't like the big boom, boom, boom next to my house. But, uh, one of the ideas was you have, or there's already ten thousand set aside. And is that gonna be on Sunday or Saturday?
That should be on Sunday. We have the Beer Fest on Saturday, which is, uh, part of our Rec Commission. And so we're doing it on Sunday, the last day of the festival.
Yeah, so then the idea was to potentially, or, or consider, or talk about having, uh, additional funds for, um, a similar show like on Sunday, but on Saturday. You know, uh, but then again, it, other factors have to be considered because I don't know what the, your, or the schedule that you and Jackie have already, and if it allows, you know, uh, within everything else that you already have planned for, for Saturday. But that'll be one option. And I'm okay with, if that was the case, and that was the option that the majority of the council wanted to go with, uh, I'm okay with ten thousand dollars, you know, just a similar show compared to Sunday. Having that on Saturday as well and just, you know, uh, we only get to be a hundred years.
Right.
Once, and, you know, I, I think it's a good opportunity. And, and, uh, and then, you know, uh, we could include those other ten thousand dollars for, for next year as well. And, you know, and then this is a good, good way to start, or invite people to get involved in, in the committee or in the planning process. And then whatever it is, whether it's an, an independent committee from the city or with the city or whatever it, it ends up being. So, but, uh, I think that, you know, uh, that would also be a, a good idea. But just my two cents actually from.
Saturday, if you don't know, we have the Beer Fest going on. We have a muster from the Fire Department. We have a muster from the Fire Department and the Carnival. And there's actually, we actually have the Kids Zone going on and then the Kids Day down in the Kids Zone. So Saturday is pretty jam packed, but if you guys decide you would like to do that, of course, we will fit that in. But Saturday was going to be our big ending for it. So, and that's why the whole band came in and the 100 years and that kind of thing. So, but it's up to you, whatever you guys decide will be, will make it work.
Thank you so much. Actually, I've been approached by several members of the community and we had several discussions. They were advocating to move the money towards the Centennial Celebration and they wanted a second night of fireworks. So there's a lot of people wanting that and I myself, I'm advocating for a second night of fireworks. I think you're right, we only, we're only 100 years once and we should go out with a bang. I like that the final is going to be, you know, coordinated with music from the band. But I don't, I, I would like to see maybe another night, just maybe just fireworks at the end of the night. Just, you know, a simple fireworks show at the end of the night. After the activities and all that, I think by then, usually those activities end, you know, nine or whatever, 9:30. And then have, you know, fireworks after. I think the, the community that I spoke into, the members of the community are advocating for that and would like to see something like that, especially after not having the Fourth of July.
Right, I understand they're just agreeing with the Fourth of July.
Absolutely. And then, so I, I'm advocating for that. If, I don't know if the council agrees. You know, like I said, I'm representing a lot of people that, that have reached out to me and I'm going to advocate for them, that I think that's a good idea to have two nights of fireworks. And then some of that, I mean, obviously we're not going to, right, it's out of season, so maybe the fireworks are cheaper. Maybe use, use some of that money towards alleviate some of the law enforcement overtime or any other supplies or things that, that need to be covered to better help with the Centennial as well. But I don't know what the rest of the council thinks.
With the allocation of being 20,000 towards the Fourth of July event, I'm thinking if they're doing the 10,000 for the one night and then with their Saturday being so jam packed, they're going to have to do two nights of the street closures, the signage for off the freeway and even the launch pad, trying to coordinate the second day with the pyro company that you went with. So again, they are still going to have to coordinate that. I mean, it could be suggested, so if I'm, I, I would still like to see both. I want to be able to see that our Centennial is very successful. If that means two days of fireworks, what our residents would like, I'm good with that. The one day with the finale with the band on Sunday is great too. But if we did a $10,000 show on a Saturday, 10,000 and the one that's already allocated towards this, the Sweet Potato Festival, the Centennial Event and then earmarking the remaining 10,000 so that we have a successful Fourth of July because we know that that's what our citizens also want. And if we already can secure that money, then it won't, it's not going to be a lot of pressure for the, so to speak, Fourth of July Committee to have to find out where we're going to get the funds for the deposit. Because usually that's what it, what we've needed in the past was a $10,000 deposit to even have fireworks. The rest of it is fundraised and then reimbursed through the cells of the other events that the Fourth of July Committee would hold throughout the year or even during the event itself is where they would make up the additional funds. So if we did a, a split, if, if the Recreation Department Commission can secure the, the Saturday for the pyro and they use some of those funds too, to do whatever else they need to have a second show because there is also many that, that needs to go towards freeway because you're, it's going to be a distraction, so they have to get ahold of Caltrans, everything. So that's going to be two nights. Yeah. And so if they did, if we allocated 10,000 for that second show, residents will get that second show on the Saturday if it can be possible, but also earmarking the remaining 10,000 of the 20 that we already approved for next year so that we also can move forward in trying to get a committee established, reestablished and have Fourth of July. We, I want Fourth of July here. So, I mean, I know personally I want Fourth of July, but I know the rest of the residents were very disappointed this year.
I think, I mean, we're still going to have a cost, we're still going to have expenditures in regards to law enforcement and everything else. I mean, those $20,000 are going to be needed, I think, and could benefit the Centennial Celebration. It doesn't mean we're spending the full $20,000 on fireworks. There's other expenses. I know that the Cent, or Fourth of July Committee fundraises and I think the city's always fronted the deposit and gets reimbursed and I don't foresee that being an issue. You know, I, I foresee the city being able to do that again and separate from this discussion, separate from this money we're talking about. For me, I, I, I'd rather put that amount, that money that we're talking about, the $20,000 towards the Centennial Celebration to make a second, a second fireworks show and use whatever leftover money towards law enforcement, security, whatever the other costs might be to better assist the city in general to have a successful event. Mayor Portem Garcia, I know you're on the phone. Many thoughts?
Can you guys hear me?
Yes.
No, yeah, I'm good with, with, with your saying, so. I'm honestly pretty good, you.
What was that again?
I said, I agree with you. I'm on the same page with.
So you agree that we should use a full amount towards the Centennial?
Uh, yes.
Thank you. Councilmember King, any other thoughts?
Well, I'm, I'm fine with both the ideas. I mean, 20,000 for the Centennial would be great, but if we could get a good show for 10,000, I don't mind saving the other 10,000 for the next year's Fourth of July. So if, I don't know if we could come back and see, you want to call those vendors and see if we could get a good show for 10,000 on Saturday? And maybe come back next council meeting and decide?
Yes, I'll have Jackie. Jackie actually deals with the pyrotechnic people. That's usually her part of our Fourth of July. She does the pyrotechnics and I do all the other vendors and whatnot. So she will be back on the 18th and I will bring it up to her that you guys would like to do that. We can come back at that time with the cost, any additional fees because we do have to meet with the fire marshal for a second show. And that just takes, we have time to get everything in place for that. And just, since we already have one date secured, hopefully we can secure the other one since it's out of season basically and their season. So I, when Jackie gets back on the 18th, I will meet with her and update her on this and then we can let you guys know, probably at the next council meeting, during staff report on what, on what the cost would be and any additional fees that might be. Right now, we have everything in place as far as security goes. We don't have too much turnover at the PD or Public Works. They've all done the Sweet Potato Festival before, so that's pretty much, but everything has gone up. But we should come in, our department does work on a shoestring budget and we're able to make it work. So we'll just come back to you with figures for a Saturday show and let you guys know and then maybe you guys can make the decision then.
Councilmember Samara?
I still, I still think that, you know, 10 and 10 will be okay. And I'm also okay with coming back in two weeks or the next meeting with more information, whatever that means.
To let you know if they're able to facilitate it, is that kind of what, am I clear on that? If they're able, we can secure them for that Saturday?
Yes.
Okay.
So I'm, I'm, I'm okay with waiting two weeks if, I mean, doesn't matter.
All right, I'll take it up for public comment. Any public comment? Anybody that want to comment on this item?
I think you guys should pick a side. You sound like you're okay with both, pick a side.
Thank you, ma'am, you're right. Anybody on the phone? Okay, I will bring it back, back for council, so. So it sounds like, I don't know, I'm still for $20,000 towards Centennial, so I'll make, I'll make the motion. And, oh, go ahead, sorry.
So obviously both are really great ideas, but I kind of do lean on the side that it would be great to know that we are working towards getting a second night of fireworks and also committing $10,000 down the road to a Fourth of July celebration. The consensus among the community is that they do want to have something brought back here. And it is really unfortunate that we haven't had anything in the last few years. But I'm just hoping that maybe perhaps you guys would consider allocating perhaps the full 20,000 and if we're not able to secure that date, to be able to roll over at least 10,000, if not the full amount towards the Fourth of July Committee so that we're working towards making a second night of fireworks happen, but also partially committing to have a Fourth of July for next year for our citizens. It'd be great for them to already be able to look forward to that for next year and a huge help to the committee knowing that they are not starting at zero and they have the commitment of the, of City Council as well. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other comments? Okay, nobody else? Absolutely, I think the key for a successful Fourth of July is just help, like organize, organizing the event. Fundraising, you know, obviously you need a lot of bodies to, to make a, a successful event. Yeah, I see both sides, definitely. But I, at the same time, I, I feel strongly about this festival and it's like once in a lifetime kind of thing. And like I said, a lot of people approached me wanting this, so I believe, like I said, like maybe a $10,000 show and then $10,000 towards other costs or if, you know, it's not going to only be the $10,000. Like you said, it's probably going to have to reach out to other agencies, security, all that stuff. So we need to calculate all those costs besides the $10,000, which will end up being, I don't know, 15, 20 maybe. So that's why, that's where I'm coming from. Like it's going to be, yeah, $10,000 show, but then there's all these other associated costs. That's probably going to take the full amount of $20,000. So that's why I'm advocating to approve the full $20,000 instead of approving $10,000 where we only have a $5,000 show and the rest are for associated costs. So I'm going to make the motion to approve the $20,000 towards the Centennial. Do we have any second?
I'll second.
Second by Councilor, or Mayor Portem Garcia?
Roll call. Councilmember Soto?
It, once we hear from the Rec Commission or the Rec Department, I mean, if a $10,000 show, great, other expenses added to it, the rest would be rolled over. That's what I would, that's what I would say. So no to your full 20,000. I will wait to see what Jackie comes back with.
Councilmember Moran?
Before I vote, can I ask you a question?
Yes.
For you to consider. So if, if you're okay with considering and being more specific, because right now you're saying 20,000 to, to the Centennial Celebration and then hopefully 10,000, but I would feel more comfortable if you were able to change your motion to 10,000 for fireworks. And 10,000 set aside if they were to need extra funds. You know, because I would like to also have those extra 10,000 be more specific to something more specific. And then they can come back to us and say, you know what, we, this is what we're planning and it looks like we might need some help. But being specific with 10,000 for fireworks so that we know that we at least have a show, a fireworks show on Saturday worth $10,000, similar to the Sunday one. I would feel more comfortable that way.
The only thing is that we would probably not know exactly what are those specific costs would probably be at this, at this exact moment.
Not at this exact moment, but for the, we could do fireworks for 10,000 or we can buy 8,000 worth, $8,000 worth of fireworks, 2,000 be allocated to any fees and whatnot. That's just the scenario, that's not actual cost. But if you allocate us the 10,000 for that particular Saturday night, then of course, we will make that work. And then you guys can of course keep the 10,000 on reserve either to roll over to Fourth of July or allocated as needed. But we would know more in two weeks once we contact the pyrotechnic company to make sure we can even get that date. Because we need to make sure that we have a technician and that they have supplies in order to make that happen. So, because there was a shortage on fireworks, I don't know if you guys knew that, there were some shortages this year. So not on the illegals apparently, but on all the safe and sane ones. But of course, if we can secure the date, we will. And then we can come back with better pricing for you and any additional fees. Or if it's going to cost more for Public Works or our Police Department. We, we do have those figures and we're just going to have to see what the pyrotechnic company, if we can even secure them for Saturday. Because I hate to say, yeah, let's do it, or you guys direct me to do it and I'm not able to.
Okay, thank you.
Don't want to give you false expectations.
So it sounds like we need more information and that's fair. I know that all council members want more information. We do have a motion on table. Attorney, Mr. Attorney, do we, so, okay, whoa, no, there was a second.
You put out the act on the motion though, so our motion has to die.
So we have to go through the motion?
Yes.
I withdraw my first. Garcia? Withdraw your motion?
Yeah, I'll second it.
No, withdraw your motion. Are you withdrawing your second?
You were drawing your first?
Yes.
Uh, yes.
All right, so we were drawing the motion in second. So it sounds like just in general, we need, council is asking for more information, which is fair. It's, it, which is, it's just fair, like, like I said, we're, I think we're all in agreement that we should find out if we could do a second night of fireworks and how much a $10,000 show plus cost would, you know, how much altogether would approximately be and then go from there. Is that good enough direction? Staff?
Yes, good, yes, we can come back in two weeks.
Okay, perfect, thank you.
Give you guys more information.
Thank you, Tony. Thanks for your time and insight, appreciate it. All right, we're going to go move on to council direction of future agenda items. Do we have any future agenda items? I don't see any.
I got something.
All right, go ahead.
Yeah, for, I would like to bring back our, who we bank with? F and M, I think, we're banking with now. Yeah, they came and, and they put their show on saying they're going to promise all this and that. However, they have not, they have not, they have not, what's the word I'm looking for here? Accomplished with what they told the city of Livingston that they would do, bring their banking system here, look for building, build something. However, they have not even, I don't think tried, but I would like to bring back, you know, West America Bank back to Livingston for us to deal with them since they're here local again.
Vanessa, did you grasp a little bit about?
I have, bring back a discussion for F and M Bank. I will, will bring the discussion.
It's probably more of an update, I, well, I don't know, well, maybe a discussion. We could, we could maybe give.
Well, maybe we can bring them back and see why they haven't did what they told us they were going to do. they were going to do.
Okay, sounds good.
I will, I, I will connect with our F and M Bank so they can provide an update-
Sounds good.
-on the items that were, that were part of the agreement when they came on board.
Perfect. Sounds good. Thank you. All right, so at this moment, we're going to go ahead and adjourn our regu-
Close session is next.
Yes, so we're going to close the regular session at 8:28 and go into closed session, which is item number 10, is public employee performance evaluation, initial six months review for the title city attorney pursuant to government code section 54957. And Bo will be reporting back. Thank you.